And we're gonna do one more thing. Yeah, actually, you're good to go. You're good to go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, sir. So the November 17th meeting of the Citroen Zoning Board of Appeals is hereby called to order. The Citroen Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact with polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and we want all participants to be marginalized and minoritized communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members, if they will participate, committed to these standards to support and respect our community. This meeting is being recorded. It will be available via Zoom and reviewed on Citroen zoning.com, Facebook Live. And the recorded meeting will be available following data on Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube. It is a hybrid meeting. We will be taking questions both from the people here in the room and the people online. If anyone is here for the planning board meeting, that meeting is being held down the street at the Public Safety Building. With that, we'll call the first application of Linda Coker of 1880 Virginia Avenue in Plain, Virginia, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, section 6, and section 8, 10.2 of the Citroen zoning bylaw and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 30 Manchester Street, Citroen, Mass., increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Is anyone here for that, on that application?
Linda is online.
Ah, excellent. Excellent. On Zoom. So your name, for your name and relationship for the record.
Hi, Linda Coker.
Hey, Linda.
Hi. I'm the owner with my husband of the property at 30 Manchester. And I'm sorry, I thought we would have our engineer here tonight.
It looks like he is here.
I don't know how many technical questions I can answer.
Is he, is he online?
I am.
So he is.
I just got unmuted. Thank you.
Josh.
Okay. Which is great. Name, address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Dana Altobello. I'm with Merrill Engineers in Lanceville. Unfortunately, Josh Green had a conflict, so he asked me to cover for, for him on this one. As you mentioned, we're representing Robert and Linda Coker. This project is located in the R3 zoning district, in a butts Manchester Street to the north, Hammer Rock Beach to the east, and then residential lots to both the west and south. The site is located within a FEMA AE13 zone, as well as a BE16 zone on the property. Currently, the site is developed with a single-family house with a wraparound porch, a detached garage, a paved driveway, and a paved storage area to the rear of the garage itself. Currently, the site's existing wastewater is directed towards a cesspool on the property and the existing building coverage is approximately 2,240 square feet and the existing impervious area on the site is 5,889 square feet. The existing building is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to the front setback, which is currently 4.1 feet to Manchester Street, where 30 feet is required, and then to the side setback is 5.8 feet to the existing garage, from the existing garage to the easterly property line, where 8 feet is required. The applicants are proposing to construct or to raise and construct a new single-family dwelling in the place of the existing dwelling approximately. This build, this building will be constructed with a deck and porch around it similar to the existing structure. It will be elevated on piles above the existing flood elevation and the front setback, which is currently 4.1 feet, will be maintained with the new structure. The proposed detached garage will have living space above it and is located in the northeast corner of, I'm sorry, southeast corner of the property and there is a proposed storage shed in the northeast corner of the property. There will be a new Pedal 5 compliant septic system installed as part of this project and the plan is to replace the existing paved driveways, which are currently in the areas of the existing, where the proposed garage and storage sheds are. That's currently all paved, as well as a storage area to the south of the proposed garage. That will all be removed and replaced with different mitigation, which will reduce the overall site coverage from 5,889 square feet down to approximately 5,028 square feet. The building coverage will increase a little bit with a slightly larger building. We'll have a 3,074 square foot building where there is currently a 2,240 square foot building. Lastly, they are proposing to install erosion controls on the westerly property line just to ensure that there's no sedimentation or erosion directed towards Hammer Rock Beach during construction. I think other than that, it's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have a couple of questions just for classification purposes. The proposed storage shed is new or replacing an existing structure?
It is new. There is a shed in the back of the property, which will be retained after construction in the southwest, yeah, southwest corner.
So there's a shed that's going to be retained and so that's going to be the retained shed and then that will be a new storage shed in, for the plan, in the upper left-hand corner in the northwest portion of the property. The proposed garage with living space is also new. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes? Is there?
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The proposed garage with living space, there's no structure there now? There's only the home and the small shed on the property?
There is an existing garage kind of in between the proposed garage and the proposed storage shed. That'll be coming down and that's where the proposed septic system will be.
So, yeah, so we're, I think, a lot of times folks see us playing on our phones or iPads. It's almost all the time we are not playing games and we're looking at the property on satellite. So where, I think what we're a little bit confused is we are seeing what looks like a large existing garage to the west of the home. And I don't see a, and I certainly could be missing it, an existing garage on the plan.
It's actually almost directly between the proposed garage, which is more to the south, and the proposed storage shed. If you look in the middle there, there's a septic system and right in that area, there's an existing garage.
I do see this. Thank you.
Sure.
I got it. Sorry. And it's, sometimes it's hard when we have the, we have the other layers on the plan, but thank you for pointing that out. There it is.
Sure, absolutely. No problem at all.
And then while we're on the what's there and what will be there train, the enclosed room on the north side of the property, that's an existing enclosed room? Meaning the enclosed structure of the home today is 4.2 feet from the street?
That's correct. It's actually 4.1 feet, but yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything more right at this moment from the board?
Well, okay. We'll need to get into the new shed.
Yeah.
So now it's as good of a topic as any. So traditionally, and I think by way of the code, we haven't heard, or maybe I should say entertained, the argument before that a new standalone structure that went beyond the building envelope was capable to be permitted with a special permit. So to be more specific, I'm of the opinion that the proposed storage shed on piles at the northwest corner would require a variance for that location.
The garage appears to be within the building envelope, within the, within the, if you're right, within the lot lines, right? It's meeting, it meets the code, right? It's eight and a half feet off the west, if you will. The building, the building itself, right, is no, does not appear to go any further than the original building. You know, it meets the other setbacks. The 4.1 feet stays the same. And now we have the storage shed, right? I'm just laying it out for everybody. The storage shed that is four and a half, 4.1 feet off Manchester Street. So while we're on that topic, I think we do need some additional information about the living space and the nature of the living space in that garage, right?
I believe Linda could probably speak to that. I think she's muted, though.
Thank you. Yeah, my husband would love that. It's been talked for a while. So going back just for a couple more things I just wanted to throw in there. There is a lot of additional concrete in the front of the house, too, that goes directly to the wall. All of that's gonna go. There's not gonna be anything but, you know, maybe favors or something that's formidable. The actual existing garage is a two-car garage and it has a workshop that used to be like an outdoor, like a kitchen. That's a layer. So it's almost like a three-car garage side and on the back of that is built sort of this open shed thing. Then there's another small little shed that's tucked right into the far corner next to 123 Hammer Rock. So there's all, and then all of that is paved. The driveway is paved. There're sidewalks everywhere, like all of that is. The garage space above is going to be an office and a bedroom with a bathroom. There's no kitchen. You know, it's not an apartment. It's just, it's just another bedroom and an office for my husband. And of course.
There is a shed. I guess I'm confused. There is a shed. That's a shed, that white thing.
There's two. There's actually two.
Yeah, that's the mall right here and the main garage, right? That garage will be on.
Yeah.
We're following.
And a bathroom. And there's a bathroom attached.
Okay. And that garage is the same dimensions as it is here, more or less, because it had a shed on it.
Yeah. And then there's a second shed that's just a smaller little dead shed that's in that far corner.
Yeah.
Now, Bob, as long as we don't do the kitchen in the garage, we don't have any accessory dwelling concerns, correct? So we're good there. I think for me, our issue is the proposed storage shed on piles. And that.
Off Manchester.
That's right. And that, and that's because that would be considered a new violation of the building envelope.
If that was a 10 by 22 addition, I think we were suggesting it wouldn't be an intensification. It would just, it would be maintaining.
No, it's outside, it's outside.
No, correct. Right, no, no. Right, an addition on, on the house, the house is looked at differently. It was a separate structure.
Introduced.
Is not. But. Right, but if it was completely within the building envelope, right, upon, right, if it's an addition outside of the building envelope, but same per parameters, a little high uncertainty, right, but still not, not fatal. Right, well, but not a lot of coverage issue. It's a setback issue, right, is where we run into trouble. Right.
Okay, and just to, just to reiterate, it's gonna be up on piling, which it's not now and all of that area right there is paved and all that will be unpaved. It'll be up on piles.
Sure. So just one thing I want to go back to is you said it's not now. Is there a shed in that location currently in the northwest corner?
No, that's the driveway.
Okay.
The part, it's part, it's paved parking right now.
And so I, just to explain again, that's the issue that we run into. There is, there, you're removing a garage, which is within the building envelope and you're replacing it with a new garage within the building envelope. Great. You're expanding a home and, in my opinion, not making it any more non-conforming than it already is. For me, folks may disagree, great. But then where I run into an issue and mostly for consistency purposes, the way this board has treated many similar applications is that you're proposing a new structure, a 10 by 22-foot shed, which falls outside of the allowed building envelope. And that's where we run into an issue. Not a lot of coverage issue, not will or will it be on piles for that concern. It is a violating setbacks within the code issue and it's not a structure we can look at as pre-existing non-conforming.
Mr. Chair, would the board entertain? I don't know if it's something that's possible, but maybe swapping currently the existing shed that's to the rear of the property. It's very close to the property line and that'd be non-conforming as well. Would it be, would it be possible to swap one for the other and move that one off the property line? Or something like that? I know it's a little unconventional.
We wouldn't be keeping it. There will be no, all of that's going.
Okay.
So we're, we're kind of just replacing the shed with the shed, but we're moving it over to the other side.
But it says retain.
No, nothing's being done, nothing's being retained. A whole lot of, a whole lot of concrete is down.
Can you clarify something?
Sure.
Over, it's a, it's a setback. They're under 200, they're under 200 square feet. How close can they be to the block line at that point?
It doesn't really affect the setback.
There's no.
How did you?
There's, there's no, there's no size limit beyond which you need to meet setbacks and below which you don't, you always need to meet setbacks.
So I have a 100-square-foot shed that I just put in. It had to, it had to cover setbacks. I didn't need a building permit, but I wasn't allowed to put it seven and a half feet from the wall.
Still have to be. As long as I have the floor, this is a suggestion that, you know, I'll just throw out there. But you could take that shed and butt it up to the proposed garage and stable wall and have your sort of storage and utility space all in one structure and it would beat all of the requirements. And it doesn't seem like it would even disturb the present design of the septic system.
Okay. I, yeah, I just don't know what the entrance is for the garage.
Yeah, what's the garage?
Yeah, okay. So if that's, if that, right, if that side is the garage entrance, then.
I don't know.
Right. Or on the other side of the garage for that.
So that's, that's the, that's the thing that we were having. Let's pause this for a second. Let's go to the folks here. Does anyone in the room have any questions or wants to speak on this issue? Who wants to, twice to know? Do we have anyone to meet, if you could check, if any, a butters or anyone else other than the applicant want to speak on this issue?
No.
Okay. No? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we covered that. Make sure the public comment period is respected. Any more commentary from the folks on the board?
Um, yeah, so, yes. So I, it requires a variance.
I agree.
And we did not advertise for a variance.
Correct.
Which, if the applicant wishes to proceed with an application for that shed.
In that location.
In that location. That's important to clarify. If that shed is moved within the building envelope, this issue goes away. But if that shed is, if the application is to have that shed go beyond the building envelope, a variance is needed. If it's a different standard for the variance, we can get into all of that to avoid you having to come back if you have some questions or if you want the board to show its hand. Traditionally, the board has been willing to have that conversation and then let you continue once we've had that conversation. But I, I believe in how we've looked at it before, and I think in terms of the notice requirements, even if we wanted to grant that variance, we could not do that tonight because that variance was not advertised. And let me know if you don't understand the reasoning for that, but in a butter that might not have had an issue with a special permit on the property, might have had an issue with a variance on the property. So technically, they have not been notified that a variance is being applied for, which is why we would have to re-advertise if you did want to pursue that variance tonight.
Could you separate, could we separate that for the special permit and have to reapply for the variance for just the shed to maintain whatever schedule they're working also?
I believe we've done that before. We have done the, and there is, yes.
If they want to exclude that from this, that shed, from the special, storage shed, from the special permit, we can grant and pursue to the plan with the exclusion of that shed, right? And they can proceed with the rest of this. And they then, if they want to build a shed, right?
They can come back for a special permit or a variance on that shed, depending on its location.
The only complication there is separate application. You gotta re-file the application rather than continue tonight.
Correct.
So.
Well, screwing it up.
Permanent fixture on piles does still have to maintain, so it's.
Yes, absolutely. Regardless of what it could be to shed.
Back to Bob. Correct me if I'm wrong, but on the code, I, I threw a 100-square-foot shed on my property just on, on its flooring and it just gets tossed on. If I prop it up or if I dig it down, I didn't need a building permit, but it does need to comply with setbacks.
Right. Interestingly, it seems to me if you exclude the shed from tonight's deliberation and you were to come back with the shed that did meet setback requirements, you wouldn't have to come back before the board to simply issue a building permit.
That's true. Correct. That's right. Right, because it's, it wouldn't be non-conforming. There would be nothing non-conforming about that shed within the building envelope.
That difference with 19 by 10 as opposed to 22 by 10, you wouldn't even need a building permit.
Exactly. Correct.
Which the elephant in the room is, is how a lot of the pre-existing non-conforming sheds in Citroen came into play. People put them off. And why if I wasn't on the board, I probably would have put my shed that I didn't need a building permit for a little bit closer to the property line. It's not like we're off the board.
We're talking to Donald.
So. We're relying on him to go show the West.
Yeah. But to, and we, we try to provide some suggestions, especially when we have an applicant that doesn't have counsel with them tonight. Hey, you've got your special permit for your home pretty well in hand and they're real, they're, this part isn't an opinion. There's no way you can get a permit for the shed tonight. So I, more than a suggestion, I think what would be prudent is that you proceed with your application for the home and the garage. You seek to obtain that special permit and we'll, we'd likely give you a requirement that you just resubmit the plan.
Without.
Without the proposed shed on it so that we could potentially approve that for you and you could move forward. And then you could decide how you want to proceed with the proposed shed. Do you want to pursue a variance? Do you want to move it? Do you want to do something different? But that would allow you to at least make significant progress on the home and the garage this evening.
And I totally understand what you're saying now and I'm really sorry. I don't know how we missed sharing part of it. My, my question is, this will significantly affect the design of the property, the way it was all pulled together, tied together with the landscaping and, you know, parking area. So if, what I'm concerned about is we cannot, we can't, we need to make this without the shed, period, because we don't know in the future if we're gonna get it or not. And that might require redesign. So I think we've got to really think about that if we're gonna go ahead and just redesign the property again and resubmit everything. Because if we, in the end, we can't get that variant, we would have needed to do things differently to add to the garage, you know, and to change around the parking and all of that. So that's, I think that's my now, is which way to go there, but.
And that's, that looks like a continuance then, right? You don't have to reapply. We don't have to re-advertise. You continue. We, we pause this application while you do your redesign and whether it's next month or the month after, you come back.
With a new plan. There you go. Right? And, and that's fine, right? It's not gonna cost you anything else, but it's other than the time to do it. And again, our guidance is that shed, that location will require a variance. A variance is a very high standard. Okay? So our advice, if you will, our guidance would be perhaps you thinking about moving the shed rather than putting it in, in a location that is that close to Manchester Street. Perfect. Absolutely. All right. So if that is what you want, would you like a continuance?
I'm sorry. I'm not, I, I think I do. What, I, I, we're gonna have to redesign. I mean, I'm not the way out of this, especially if it's not looking good since the variance approved. I think we have to.
So I'll make a motion that we continue this application two months, to the January meeting, to our regular scheduled January meeting.
That looks, I just want to slow down and make sure that's what they, well, that's what they want. So, hey, yeah. If you need to do redesign, you need a continuance. I just want to make sure you're comfortable with that before we.
Right.
What I'm not comfortable with is chugging off one out of the three buildings on the property and not redesigning it.
Of course, correct.
So I, I think, I don't feel like we have a, right now, we have to redesign and that requires a continuance then. Is that?
Excellent. I think that's.
I would think that makes sense.
Okay. So, so I'll move that we continue this to, this application to the January meeting of seven?
Or is it?
Just typically, we throw out exactly what's.
Do we have the date for the January?
January 19th.
January 19th meeting. I will not be here. That's correct. All right. All those, you seconded it?
I seconded it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So continue.
One more, one more bit of possible advice on the scheduling aspect of this is that you need to go before the historical commission because the home you're proposing to tear down is over 100 years old and that can take some time. So you might want to move ahead on that during this period where you're continuing the zoning board here.
Because it is a race, it is a race in reconstruct, regardless of what you do to the property. You'll, you'll have to go to that, or this. So it makes sense to approach them sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
All right. On the second.
Have a good evening.
Evening. Say hi. All right. On the second application of Monica McKenzie, 5 Alden Road, Inglewood, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter 48, section 6, section 8, 10.2 of the Citroen zoning bylaw and any, and/or any other relief that the board may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at lot 25 Julian Street, Citroen, Mass., increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Do you have anyone here on the second application? Your name, address for the record, please. Yep, right here. You have the same uh. Representative Merrill?
I believe so.
Yeah, which is fine, he can, he can get, I don't know, declare. All right, proceed. And then hopefully he will rejoin us. Walk us through this. This seems a little bit less complicated. Why don't you folks try to walk us through this, name, name and address for the record.
My name, my name is Monica McKenzie. And I am from the Design Build Farm in King Mass, so I'm potentially the builder.
Understood.
And.
Dan Quayle, uh, forty-two North Architects. Excellent, all right, so we have designers and architects, excellent, um. So why don't you walk us through the project? And uh, plus what's your kind of concept?
Um, it's a small cottage, um. Watering, a marquee with a right-of-way to the right of it. And um, it's about six hundred square feet right now, and we're proposing to raise it and. Make a taller house there, it's about three thousand square feet.
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred square feet. Um, we are inside of the setbacks. Um, but it's, that it's uh, I didn't really realize I had to go to zoning. The building inspector was nice enough to let me know that the lot is too small for.
Right.
And that's why I'm looking up.
Excellent, uh. So. Uh, it meets, the the houses that exist meets the front yard setbacks, the proposal will be meet the front side yard setbacks. Uh, width and frontage are uh undersized, they they do not meet the archway zone, there's nothing you can do about that. Uh, the current side setbacks are four point two and fifteen feet, according to the plan, those will be eight point two and eight point four feet. Which will meet, which will meet the code. Uh, and then the rear setback uh is currently forty-four feet and will be thirty-nine point four. Um. Yeah, there's a building coverage location here on the plan, but really we're, it's a nine hundred and twenty square foot house, it will be. Uh, thirty-two hundred or so square foot house, um. Is this? So, is this going, let's see. Is this going up on, it's going up on pylons, right, so, yeah, so when you say raise, arguably means two things, right? Uh, you bulldoz it and you're propping it up, the Z and the no.
Yeah, I can, you know.
The guy with X's in his name, you know, sometimes here's things different.
Pumpkin climbing.
Exactly, um, okay, no proposed grade changes, okay, so that looks. Relatively straightforward, uh. It's gonna be general requirements, right, for the building permit, height, um, it is going up, uh, I assume it's gonna be. You're not asking for any kind of variance in the height, right, you need the height requirement. Uh, as far as I can. Trying to tell, I'm just trying to check up all the boxes on this. Um.
I don't see a listing for it.
I don't see a listing, that's why.
There's other plans, we have to.
Ah, there we go. There we go, there we go.
Any, any ships?
Yep. All right. Okay. So that seems to be okay. Um. So it's gonna be a thirty, almost thirty-two hundred river house, that's on the application. Yeah, it's on the application, that's gonna be the. Right, so that's gonna make a building impact, I think they might.
Roughly a two hundred fifty percent increase. Emphasis on roughly. Yeah, they calculated it three fifty from like twenty to thirty-three hundred.
It's uh, not a three hundred fifty percent, I've always, I've been the math teacher on the board about this.
Yeah.
It's three hundred fifty percent, but not a three hundred fifty percent increase. You gotta take off a hundred for the increase. And it sort of matters because that triggers the code.
Right.
But it matters when we're down rounds, huh?
That's right.
Yeah.
It's not three, it's three, it's three point five times the garden size, it is uh. For better or worse, relatively in keeping with the limit. Correct, that's, that's the other uh fact. Um. Uh, any?
No, very straight, no worries.
Very straightforward.
No issues.
Four questions.
No, I thought it might.
We're getting rid of the non-conformity.
Getting rid of the non-conformity again.
Correct, uh, anything from. From the community in the room? Anyone's going first, can you, anything from the community on Zoom? About once. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed home at twenty-five Julian Street, constituent plan drawn by Merrill Engineers Land Surveyors. And D, October first, twenty twenty-two. Does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities. Such intensification is not substantially above their threshold.
A second. Vela?
Aye.
unanimous application granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you did. All right, on the third application of Patricia Rodigan, seventeenth Circuit Avenue, City of Mass, requesting a special permit finding. In accordance with NGL chapter forty-eight, section six. Section eight ten point two of the City of Zoning Bylaw. And or on any other relief that the board appeals may grant to allow the construction of an addition. To a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and lot seventeen Circuit Avenue, City of Mass, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent. We have, there we go, and we have the applicant, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can, yeah.
Okay, my name is Caroline Reese from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors in the Norwell office. I'm representing the applicant, applicant Patricia Rodigan, who I believe is also listening in. Uh, she is proposing additions and some other improvements to her single-family home at Seventeenth Circuit Avenue. And we are seeking relief under section eight ten point two of the zoning bylaw. Um, for a few reasons, for one, the lot is non-conforming, uh, the frontage of the lot is about fifty-three feet. Um, and the required is one hundred feet, uh, the lot width accordingly is also non-conforming, that's sixty-one feet. Um, as opposed to the required one hundred. Um, and the building is non-conforming with regard to front setback. Uh, there is twenty-six feet of. Uh, yardage from the street to the front of the building and thirty feet is required. And the owners are also proposing uh some additions that'll increase the gross floor area. By approximately thirty-three feet over the twenty percent limit. Uh, so just to, I don't know if I can share the screen or I guess we can all see the screen, I can describe the additions.
Totally.
Pardon?
Yeah, you see it, and please proceed.
You're okay, okay, so there are two additions on either side of the dwelling. Um, one on what I would call maybe the south side, the L-shaped addition, that will be a two-story addition. Increase in the footprint on that section by about two hundred and ninety square feet. On the opposite side, close to the rear of the house, they are proposing uh one-story screens and porch. And that may be towards the north side, uh, they're also proposing some other work around the house, they're gonna expand that rear deck. Uh, the plunge pool, the eight by thirteen plunge pool is new, and they are going to uh. Replace the existing shed on the side of the house. Um, with a slightly smaller one and some landscaping and hardscaping improvements around the property. Uh, none of these proposed changes um add any additional non-conformities, they're all within the setbacks and the um. Allowable coverages, and the front setback will not change because they're not proposing any work near the front base of the building. And so that's about, I think, the job in summary, I can turn it for questions?
I'll turn it over to the board, questions?
I, I. I don't see the measurement if it's there, but I just, in terms of scale. The uh, western addition, not the L-shaped addition. Appears to be well beyond eight feet from the side property line, is that correct?
It is, it is, I think it's about, oh gosh, we don't have it on there, I think it was seventeen feet or I can see it in the zoning.
We, we can tell from the scale, it's not, it's not really close.
Table, correct. I know, it's in the application table.
Sure. The. Are you seeking any relief with respect to the proposed plunge pool? That maybe you just want to call a hot tub?
Um, no, I I don't believe, is, that's within the setback as well.
So there, is there a setback from a home, Bob?
No, from, from the building itself, not to my knowledge.
There isn't? Yes. Okay, great.
Uh, all of that is a good question.
Might the, might the board have held them a setback from?
I, I might, I might have a fourth foot um zone uh to walk around the edge of the pool.
Something, not something that this board needs to worry about, something you, I just want to keep on your radar.
Sure, we'll check that out.
I think.
Maybe just, maybe just call it up. I, I unfortunately have read the whole bill, but we don't have to worry about that tonight, and. That, those are really my only questions, uh, yeah, this is. We give him, yeah, and again, eight feet uh off the side, so.
Yeah.
Standpoint, we're good on, we're good on the.
Um, any commentary from the community here in the room? Oh, please, please come up, name uh and address for the record, please.
Yes, Alan McCloud, Fourth Circuit Avenue. The uh, as neighbors of the Rodigans, uh, we are generally in support of the expansion of their. Uh, residential footprint in areas, the development. Of the recreational amenities as they propose. We would however respectfully request that the board consider and evaluate two areas of concern. Um, as it reaches funding. Speaking for myself and also for the owners of fifteenth Circuit Avenue, which is to the left of. Of the proposed. Property, they're not able to be here, but their property manager Frank Snow and I have. Asked every uh. Construction project, proposed construction project or renovation project on Circuit Avenue. To give assurance that no surface runoff. From the parking facilities or the lot will enter the street. And we received that from almost everyone uh in the past, so we asked the question again this evening. For that assurance from. The cir, uh, the gray has always pitched to the ocean, uh. There is a nineteen thirty-three private catch basin and six-inch drain that runs to the back. Of the riprap. And that was put there to resolve a ponding problem that in severe storms. The water in the old spot would then overflow the driveway, carry debris and everything down, so. My property at number twelve is in the center of the oval. And it was granted a license. To drain its basement and the surface areas of the lot through that catch basin. I believe I'm the only person that has a license to accomplish that, but. In any case, the uh. Any, right now, the. Improvements on the street, things like that have increased runoff. And in the severe storms. Uh, that old system is, it's a six-inch drain and it's just absolutely overwhelmed. The water bubbles up out of a drain manhole at the back of the riprap and then floods across. Fifteen to adjacent properties on the west. It's a nuisance, it's not a major flooding problem, it's a nuisance, but. We've, we've attempted to address it and. In my case, I have performance standards in order to maintain my license. I have to ensure that there's no septic pollution, chemical pollution, no excess runoff of uh. Sediment, that kind of thing, and I modify my lot. Uh, property septic systems and everything. Uh, in, in order to do that, and maintain the edges of my property and the buffer zone. In grass so that any runoff is filtered, people will get to the street. But I do have a right to drain the catch. Secondly. In a quick review of the plan that Rodigans, uh. They offered me a copy of it. It appears that the engineering and landscape consultants. And not incorporated the intent, the applicability, or the specificity of the uh. Uh, of section seven sixty with respect to parking in their layout. Your plan, I believe, shows an existing gravel strip. At Circuit Avenue.
Yep. Read it back, I can.
That was. My way of understanding was the informal. Uh, solution. That addressed the uh, the proponents used for parking. Uh. It wasn't a problem in that it, it, while it uses part of the buffer of the street. Layout. It did not just impact or disturb uh the buffer and it did not compromise. The utilities that run beneath that buffer. The house adjacent to the south. Has. An electric service and cable in conduit. That runs back to a utility wall. On the other side, the other corner of lot fifteen, uh, number fifteen. There's a gas line, there's a water line. And then the house stores pressurized uh sewer line all exit through that, so. Um, maintenance. I think could be a problem, the gravel strip didn't do that, but the plan that's before you for approval. Is seeking to formalize that. And it results. In. The use of the buffer zone as part of the required parking space. And.
Sorry, yeah, I, I, I'm not familiar with what you mean by the buffer zone, so there's, there's a fifty.
Street layout.
There's a fifty-foot and a hundred-foot coastal buffer zone.
No, 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 this is, this is just within the street layout. Circuit Avenue with thirty-foot wide layout.
Yep.
The paved area in the center of the layout is sixteen feet. The buffer zone in the street is, runs four to five feet along the, the eastern.
Oh, I see where it's at.
Okay.
Of, of Circuit Avenue, of the pavement of Circuit Avenue.
Of Circuit Avenue. That's correct.
So we, we have on the plan here plotted the entirety of the layout of Circuit Avenue, not just the pavement, which you can see right here. So we, we have that additional area plotted and there still appears to be ample area within the parking area to park two cars, which is what would be required by code.
That's correct. Except.
Except.
The, in, under applicability, the issue of a residence, one or two family residences being expanded or changing use so that there would be more demand for parking. Those new spaces, those required spaces are supposed to be installed on site.
So, I, just a couple of things there. I, I don't believe we have a change in
No.
Or of this home before us, and that would include going from a one to two family. And the gravel parking area, even only looking at the portion of the gravel parking area which does not encroach into the entirety of Circuit Avenue, appears to be ample space for at least two cars, which is what would be required under seven sixty. So I, it is important thing to, to look at, but I, I do want to clarify your concern. There, there does appear to be ample space for two cars, which is what is required, potentially more than two.
Well, there's, there's one on three, right, adding to the bedroom.
So the, the bedroom count, correct us if we're wrong, does not affect the parking required.
That's correct.
This is a single family home, so it's, it's two cars that are required. A valid question, absolutely, yeah.
My, my, yes, my initial statement was the gravel strip was put there because they felt they needed more parking. And now they've, they said, and that was an informal approach. And now they're formalizing that. And they want to pave out to the pavement line of the road.
No. No, if I can, I could clarify.
Yeah, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, just to clarify a couple of things. And, and sometimes it's tough to see this. There's an existing concrete driveway that's going to be removed, replaced with permeable pavers. And the proposed driveway actually extends off the street farther back into their, the applicant's lot, which would, and Sean Papich is the landscape and hardscape architect on the phone, he could speak. But as I see it, the existing gravel parking, which as you say, cringes on the right away, the thirty foot right away of Circuit Ave, the, the previous parking's being pushed back. It looks like I was trying to measure about ten feet, eight to ten feet. It's at an angle. So I think cars would move off the street more. And as far as runoff, we have been in front of conservation and we, we received an approval from them, but that concrete driveway is being removed, so in theory, a previous driveway will provide less runoff, if that helps.
So, so the gravel parking and the concrete driveway are being replaced with the previous paper driveway?
Exactly.
Which subsCould both of those areas and some additional area, all of that on the property?
Mm-hmm.
Or not?
I believe I can.
Do you want to verify that what you have is what we have? Perhaps it was changed.
Pardon, may I speak again? I just see Sean Papich is on the line. I don't know if he's trying to speak.
What's your opinion? Thank you. Thank you. I don't know if you can hear me right now. It's Sean Papich, Sean Papich Landscape Architecture. And Caroline is like, we are moving to a permeable paper surface and pushing that further into the property so that you can get cars off of and out of the street layout. And out, it's kind of a deep street layout in that location, so that's the intent of what we're trying to do there. If you have further questions about it. Could be improved for permeability of the site. Project has gone through Conservation Commission, had, had been approved.
Well, I heard your comment. I I think I would refer to the intent in second, section seven sixty then, to provide adequate off-street parking. The I believe, and it appears that this is the same plan that you have in front of you. The proponents are using four feet of the, of the street layout as part of their parking space. And they need, according to your zoning board, eighteen feet for a parking space.
So, just to clarify again, this property, within the property, has more than enough area to park the required number of cars required by section seven sixty. You are correct that there is some parking area that extends into the right of way of the street. That is not needed to comply with seven sixty. And that extension of driveways and parking areas into the legal right of way is something that is incredibly common in the town of Situate and elsewhere in the Commonwealth. But it is important that they have ample parking to comply with seven sixty within their lot, and they certainly do. When I say ample, per the code. Whether it's enough in one person or another's opinion for a house of this size is a different matter. But the code requires two, and they have at least two within their lot.
Especially houses we design.
Yes?
So that Circuit Avenue is a private street. Each of us, as documents, have a statement on the road and the buffers and that kind of thing. And I believe that providing thirteen feet of space for a vehicle on the edge of the paved surface. I'm sorry, from the.
Yep.
Thirteen feet from the, from, within the property line. Four feet or more extending through the buffer to the edge of the pavement. And there is a requirement for adequate back hole space. The pavement is sixteen feet wide. When four or five cars are parked across the front of a property, as, as occurred occasionally, you can't, they can't back out and turn in sixteen feet. Uh, sure, wheelbase vehicle might be able to, but regular sedan, anything else difficult. Providing the proper stall depth, depth as spelled out in the code. And using the buffer zone as the backup space allows a car to get into the street and leave. And seems to be a more appropriate approach than the proposed solution.
So, sorry, I think it is important, just to confirm again, they are not proposing to use any portion of the street layout for parking. They, they're, they're not. We are not being asked to grant that relief. We are not granting any relief within, as to parking. There, when they go for a building permit, they will need to fully comply with the code as to parking. Or they will not get a building permit. And nothing in the proposal before us shows that they are seeking to not fully comply with the code or to utilize any portion of the street layout for parking.
What? Uh, on the plan that I have here, it shows parking of vehicles.
That, that's, that's a landscape plan. He does have this references, but we don't have it, so maybe we're.
So.
Hope we don't have it, so it's time to talk.
Yeah, so to the, to the extent you have a plan that shows proposed parking in the street, and to the extent that plan violates the code, they're not asking us to give them permission to proceed under that plan.
Okay.
There, any relief we give will be based on this plan. And this plan does not show any permitted parking in the street. Whether or not they throw a car in the street is going to be something that is going to be between the neighbors on the private road. Everybody's got their rights to pass and repass and public safety and whatnot, but we're not giving any relief that allows them to utilize any unpermitted or beyond the code street parking.
All right. Well, yeah, given that statement and the fact that, that there is, as it were, responsibility under the building permit, my wife and I and are then fully in support of what they propose to do with the caveat that we take, we have a concern about the parking as it's shown, at least on this landscape plan, which you do not have.
Sean, or I could speak. It, it's very similar layout. I think the confusion is edge of pavement versus edge of right of way. But the cars shown on the landscape plan and ones in SUV do not extend, and Sean can speak to it, onto the pavement of the road. The road has an extension into the lawn area and, and it will be deeper and cars could probably park at an angle there if they so choose, but it's forty feet wide. But the way it's designed, and Sean could speak better, it, the cars have room to park without, and several feet without extending into the paved part of the road.
That's correct. You said it right. That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Do we have anybody else here that wanted to speak on this issue? Yes, sir, please come up, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Evening.
My name is Joseph Harold. My wife Katie and I, we live at twenty-one St. Gav. Which is two houses lower from the Brodigans.
Sure.
And we are in full support of all their intentions here, what they want to do with the additions, the, the hot tub. And I have reviewed the order of conditions as well. We're in full support of that. And no one Brodigan's living, two of us down from them for five or six years, there's never been an issue with parking, the cars on the street. Um, the gravel, it's well maintained. They keep it up, very well kept up. And Katie and I are in full support of their intentions of what they want to do there.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always, it's always good to hear neighbors supporting other neighbors. Uh, anybody on, on Zoom that would like to speak? Okay, I think we're done. I'll try to, Bob, anything else that we missed?
Uh, no, my point of view.
Thank you. Uh, motion?
I'll make, I'll do it.
I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition shown, the proposed additions as shown, well, to the property at Seventeenth Circuit Avenue in Situate, shown on the plan drawn by Cavanar Consulting and dated October fourth, twenty twenty-two, do not create any new nonconformities to the extent they intend to buy an existing nonconformity. Such intensification is not substantially detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Third, I'll take that one. On the fourth application of Andrew Galavan, fourteen Wigwam Lane in Citrus, Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NBL chapter forty-eight, section six, section eight, ten point two of the Citrus Zone Bylaw and all, and the release that the board has just made grant to allow the construction in addition to pre-existing nonconforming dwelling at fourteen Wigwam Lane in Citrus, Mass, and increase in the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Name for the record.
Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer Morse Engineering, representing the property owner Andrew Galavan. As was just written to the record, this is a request for a finding, a special permit in accordance with section eight, ten point two of the Bylaw, as well as National Law Chapter forty-eight, section six, to allow an existing dwelling to have a proposed addition put onto it. This is a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling. The property itself is located at fourteen Wigwam Lane. This is in the Residence Two zoning district. The lot itself is fully compliant with zoning with respect to area, frontage. The home of the property was built in nineteen thirty. It is nonconforming with respect to front yard setback. The home sits at eleven point three feet from the front lot line. The proposal here is to put an addition off the back of the house, in a small addition off the westerly back corner, the westerly side of the house. The house as it sits today is seventeen hundred and sixty-four square feet in size. With the additions, the total will be two thousand six hundred and forty-four square feet. So a relatively modestly sized house represents a forty-nine point nine percent increase. It does not create any new nonconformities. It is no closer to the lot lines than what exists today. And all of the additions comply with zoning setbacks. Turn it over to you.
Quick question. None of the construction violates the hundred foot wetland setback. Is that correct?
We've been to the Conservation Commission for work in the hundred foot buffer, but the additions themselves are outside the hundred foot buffer.
The work, yeah, you did them for the septic work.
For the septic work.
Correct. The wetland setback, okay. Uh, do you see anything here that we might not see?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Uh, board?
Great, I'm, I'm guessing, I know you're rather familiar with the section. I'm, I'm guessing the rest of the homes on the street don't get us to eleven three, right? Now, I would assume you would have tried it in that sort of ways.
Well, I have one line. I think feet and stories seem to be reversed. Just want to make sure when I give it, I'm going with a thirty-five story.
A thirty-five, yes.
The thirty-five, uh, stories or two-foot building type required, so.
They still improve everything.
Yeah, that's true, you gotta keep us.
Gotta keep us on.
There you go. We lost the bat right there, I bet you.
Uh, anybody within the room that would like to comment? No, anybody online that would like to comment?
All right. So I move. Motion?
Good.
I'll make a motion that applicants request for the construction addition to a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling on fourteen Wigwam Lane in Citrus, Mass. Moving board of time, uh, pursuant to the plan by Morse Engineering dated ten nineteen twenty twenty-two, that said time does not introduce any new nonconformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, those nonconformities are not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can take it.
Excellent. Granted.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, and on the final application for this evening. Elizabeth.
Tefan.
Tefan Chen, right, thank you. Uh, trustee of eleven Jericho Road Realty Trust, ten Jericho Road, Citrus, Mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty eight, section six. Section eight ten point two of the Citrus Zone Bylaw and or and or any other relief that the board of Phil's May grant. To allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling at eleven Jericho Road, Citrus, Mass. And increase in the gross floor area by more than twenty percent. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alan Tefan Chen, uh, ten Jericho Road, Citrus, Massachusetts.
Tefan Chen, can you walk us through the project?
Yep, there's a a large house there right now. It's two-family. When I got it about forty years ago, it was about a five-family. It had um. Room to all of the places, I can't remember. Um, and I converted it to to brought down to a two-family. And essentially the same tenants have been there for years and um. It's just one of those things that's at my age, I don't feel like leaving it to my daughter and having a mess. And I just wanna tear the place down and start over again. Probably crazy to really do that, do it.
Yeah.
I wanna do it anyway.
Okay, so that's great. Um, there we go. Over and up. So let's uh, put the plan and the footprint. Uh, what is? So the proposed porch is thirty feet off. Got the calculations on this one.
Just to uh, to confirm, the proposed porch that we're seeing in the front of the home. Is that is that a single-story uncovered porch?
Yep. So we're.
So we're more than thirty feet.
Back back on that. Um, so that's the Jericho is seventeen point one. So the so Jericho Road as opposed to Jericho Lane is the front yard on this?
Jericho Road is, yep.
Okay, so front yard setback, it means it, side yard setbacks. We are, the proposed dwelling is approximately um twenty-one feet from the north side yard setback, is that correct?
Yeah, uh, no, the old one was.
Oh, that's the old one, the existing one.
But he's got, he has an eight-foot line there.
Within the eight-foot line, that's it, okay. And then uh, the other one is seventeen, that's the shortest, right? Uh, rear yard is fine, uh, little garden. Uh, so it will meet. Mine.
Are they here?
Yeah.
They're here for a lot width.
A lot width.
And frontage and increase of more than twenty percent. I don't.
It's a lot width and frontage.
Do we have the uh, yes, we do. We are increasing by sixty-three percent.
Yeah.
That's why we're here, but the new dwelling. Will be entirely within the building envelope, eliminating a previous front yard setback nonconformity.
Comment on that? It's been ruled under various other decisions that. Jericho Lane would constitute a front yard as well.
One lot.
Really depends on the legal description of Jericho Lane. And it's pretty subtle, but even if that were the case. You're not creating any new nonconformities because the existing building uh doesn't meet that thirty-foot requirement anyway. So it may be nonconforming, but it's not a new nonconformity.
Important clarification.
Increasing but not.
That's right.
You know, I don't, I I I tracked down like this sixty-three percent increase. I know somebody calculated. It doesn't look like it to me. I thought, I think they forgot to subtract the hundred. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but.
Well, are we going up?
I'm not an mathematician. I'm terrible at it.
We're going up to forty-eight hundred square feet?
I just eyeball it, I thought it was twenty-nine.
Are we going some twenty-nine hundred square feet to forty-eight hundred square feet? That's the question. Is that?
Eighty.
Alright, well, if that's.
Well, well, we should.
We need to know.
We we should be clear, that's what's on the application.
Right, right, that's why.
So if if we're going to fifty-two, for instance, that's sort of needed now.
So you're going. Yeah, that's um.
I was provided those figures by the rest of the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then.
Alright, no, and I.
Cavanaugh is pretty, pretty good with the calculator.
Yeah, and the percentage is uh accurate. You're going from three to forty-eight hundred. It's not double. Um, it's less than that, so.
Should.
Um. Okay, so that's, so corner lot, so we have two, two front yards.
That's right, so we have. Existing home is nonconforming as to both, right? They're bringing one out of two into conformity and one slightly more.
Bringing in one a a bit closer. Right, in in one area.
In one area and I, you know, to speak to Bob's comment, we we have traditionally viewed even less significant private ways. As roads for the purpose of setbacks, but. Especially for less traveled private ways have traditionally been rather open to moving a bit closer to them. Um. Especially here where Jericho Road is obviously more of a major road. It's pretty nice, in my opinion, to get the existing home um.
A little further back.
That's right.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, anything else from the board? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, public in the room, yes, please.
Yes, please. Susan Tedeschi, I live at one Jericho Lane. Um, we just would like to request if the driveways could remain in the front of the house as they currently are. The road is very small. Jericho Lane is very small and very very narrow. It's a gravel road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have grandchildren. It's um a difficult road to travel because it is narrow. Um, it is a, I believe it's a one-family home that's currently there on the property at eleven Jericho Lane. Uh, I'm sorry, Jericho Road, and they have ample parking in front, and we were just hoping that that parking could stay there.
I understand, so I I think, I feel like you flipped your request there at the end a little bit or added to it. You. The existing home there does have a driveway entrance that looks like it's used on Jericho Lane.
It is, um, that driveway comes off of Jericho Road and goes straight back. If you look at the earlier plans, that there's an earlier picture. They have, they do walk to the berm and use that side driveway and they put up a fence. But it's one continuous driveway from Jericho Road to the side of that house.
Um. Yes, but I think my point is, the the home for some time has accessed the home, the vehicles. By traversing Jericho Way.
Correct.
And so your request is that they stop.
Well, that, we would hope that no additional driveways will be on the side. There are driveways in the front of the house.
Okay, yes.
So there's a two-part driveway in the front.
Yeah.
Of eleven Jericho Road. We were hoping that that could stay the case and all remain equal.
I I guess.
Does that make sense?
You're asking that they don't stop parking off of Jericho Road?
Correct.
Okay.
I I think what she's saying is she hopes that they there is still access off Jericho Road. So that a hundred percent of the access to the house is not through Jericho Lane.
Don't.
Because Jericho Lane is very tight and increasing the traffic might be problematic.
Correct.
Am I summarizing it?
Correct, thank you.
Have you had a chance to look at this department? Have you had a chance to look at your own?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so I I think they're not proposing any new or additional garages.
Right.
Off of Jericho Lane. Um, they're not proposing to increase their reason to use Jericho Lane.
Oh, I.
So I I, yeah.
I just want, I am com- I'm completely on board with the home.
Sure.
That um Alan would like to build. I have no problem with all that. I would just like for that to remain, the driveways to remain where they are.
Sure.
So I'm afraid if I don't mention at this meeting and in six months from now, all of a sudden new driveways get put in on the side. Then I, my voice wasn't heard.
So. Bob, what?
Is that reasonable?
What, I see, and.
Oh, yeah, but.
We like to hear everything and it's great, and even if it's not for us, it's it's great that the. I I think what. In my opinion, we can't. Can't or really haven't traditionally done is. I'm not sure I would be for conditioning this permit on their maintaining. Their driveway along Jericho Road. If they wanted to grasp that over, I don't think we would. Want to stop them from doing that, especially given that they have a driveway on Jericho Lane now. Does that make sense?
I I don't know that we we should or we can't condition it. I think the plan as it exists currently. Is exactly uh what what uh sort of desire, um. But that being said. You know, I mean. Bob, where can they, where can they put curb cuts, so to speak?
Well, it's really up to the DPW.
Right.
Especially on this stretch coming up the hill towards the lights.
Right.
I don't think the DPW would be very minimal to additional curb cut or even to a change.
In the existing.
In the present curb cut.
Right.
You know, it's not the greatest spot to have one, but it's there to.
Yeah.
So you're not, you're not gonna be changing.
So to this person's point, right, it's uh, it it's it's a tight, interesting spot.
So I I think. Though they'd need some form of permitting to add a curb cut, but I I don't necessarily see us saying. Yes, you can build this larger home as long as you don't give up your Jericho Road curb cut. I. I don't see a, it feels like that's what you want. You don't want them to stop using the Jericho Road parking?
Correct. I I would just like to see things remain equal the way they currently are. I I would prefer not to see three or four new driveways go on Jericho Lane.
Sorry, so. He.
I mean, I I I think that's a reasonable request, you know, it's applied at length.
Can we ask, what is your, what's your?
I don't intend on doing that.
Oh, that's.
No, I don't think. No, I don't think.
I, they're not proposing a new one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, I, I, you know, I, I mean, you know, her husband asked for to use it money right away. I I have no problems with it at all. And I I don't intend on putting any new driveway.
In a road, yeah, I'm just looking at the location of the new house here, actually. Encroaching into what looks like an existing driveway there anyways, making it harder to use it, so. He's really not. I don't, I I I know what you're saying, but.
Sure.
He's self-limiting already.
Yeah.
I just wanted to my diligence, you know, I I can't not say anything and then, well, you should have arrived at a meeting and say.
Sure, I I think my point is, it's.
As I said, I have absolutely no problem with the house that owns it free, that it's not, that's a non-issue.
Yeah, the, if they're not. They're not asking for any new access on Jericho Lane now, so. I I think what what I wanna say is, what they decide to do later will sort of be a separate issue later, and arguably with.
It's not. DPW.
Yeah.
Not not with us, because it would be a question of curb cuts right on 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 these roads.
But I think.
The gentleman has heard you. Um, and uh, and I think, you know, certainly he's definitely intentional. Do we have any app, anybody, not uh, anybody online that would like to speak on this? Yes, sir, name and address for the, uh, uh, okay.
Never seen that guy before.
So, so we gotta, we gotta.
The first one was first.
Okay.
It lined it up that way.
Right, so first first individual, please name, name and address.
Michael Saucer.
Yep, yep, uh, Michael Saucer, I'm the owner uh next door at seven Jericho Lane. Um, and yeah, my comments just kinda echo Susan's, you know. We're good with kinda where that existing driveway is. It's just, hey, we probably don't wanna see any more added traffic um on Jericho Lane. Um, you know, it is a dirt and gravel road. Um, you know, so the wear and tear on that road and then plus the the safety issue, you know, there's there's lots of kids. I know my two young kids are outside all the time and then there's kinda hedges, there's blind, it it's just, we we're just kinda concerned about any added traffic. We don't mind current driveway there, but we just kinda wanted a little uh. You know, to see what the plans were as far as if there was gonna be only one driveway and everyone was gonna access that home on Jericho Lane. Or if it was kinda gonna be the same as it is right now.
And it sounds like there are no changes to the driveways as of right now. If there were, to Bob's point, uh, I think there would have to be a. Uh, discussion with DPW, right? So. So I think, yeah. It it good there. Uh, next individual, sir, name and address for the.
This is me speaking.
Yes, sir. It's you.
Okay, Steve Borkman, uh, eight sixty-one Main Street in Norwell. It's hard to tell who you're who you're calling on, that's all. And I have a, I heard something a little earlier. First of all, I have no uh, no dog in the race here, but um. When you were talking about the setbacks and what creates new nonconformities and not new nonconformities. Um, you were referring to the front setback on this lot, and there's actually two front setbacks. Just as any lot would have two side setbacks, correct? They have a left setback and a left setback.
That's correct. Both lots would have two side setbacks, a front and a rear setback, because this is technically a corner lot on two roads. There are two front setbacks.
Okay. So, and and I'm just trying to understand where the board is coming from here. And again, I I wish Mr. Tefan Chen uh well to get this dwelling, but as people talk to me about these setback issues. And whether something is a set, a uh special permit or a variance. If he had two side setbacks and he didn't meet one of them, would that say he was two feet from a side lot line? Does that mean that you could build all the way to two feet from the other side lot line? Because we're not creating a new nonconformity?
No, no, it it wouldn't seem, I think maybe what you missed in the earlier presentation is. That this home is currently within thirty feet from Jericho Road. And within thirty feet from Jericho Lane currently.
Right.
So it it presently violates the side back from both. So that's why it is not new. We're not, we're not jumping from one street to the other with the nonconformity.
There are two nonconformities. One is being put into conformity, right? And the other one is slightly, in certain areas, slightly more nonconforming.
Okay, so so if I had somebody that I was dealing with that was twenty feet from the street. It would be not in conformity. I could tell them that they could go ten feet from the street and that's not creating a new nonconformity.
That's correct. It would not be a new nonconformity. It would be an intensification of a nonconformity and it would require.
A determination, a a review and a determination.
Okay, so this one is, this is an intensification. This this is an intensification of the nonconformity on Jericho Lane.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I got that straight, because to me it looked like it might have been a variance. But I understand how you're doing it now. I wish him, I wish him well and uh, I just wanted to clarify that for myself. I appreciate the time.
Sure, so ju- just to confirm, the existing dwelling sits at twenty-eight point four feet from Jericho Lane. And uh, yeah, thank you.
And the new dwelling will be seventeen feet.
Seventeen point one.
At its closest point, correct, to Jericho Lane.
Correct.
Okay, no, I just, I thought that was a variance, but if it's a special permit, that's great, our finding. Thank you.
I hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I have a question.
Okay, I think that's everything from, is that everything from everybody on Zoom, Jimmy?
Yes.
Thank you. The rooms.
Is this a single-family dwelling or multiple? Because the paperwork says both.
So it's two-family as it's existing, and you're and you're and you're gonna build a single-family.
No, I don't rebuild a two.
You're gonna rebuild a two-family.
Okay, but, cause the uh, it says. On our agenda, it says.
Single-family.
So it's a multiple family or two-family?
It's a two-family.
I would take the position that that's not a fatal misadvertisement, because they're not seeking any relief as to the use of.
No, they're not, correct, correct. No, I just noticed that it said it in.
Yeah, sure, yes, yes. Good.
And the application addresses to. I agree, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's good.
Sorry. And make the make the question even more valid.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like once parking, it's not once.
Right. Uh, any other questions?
No, you want me to make a question?
Please.
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion that the proposed raise and reconstruct of a pre-existing nonconforming two-family dwelling shown on a plan prepared by.
Uh, Cavanar, that's all.
Cavanar Consulting dated.
October twenty.
October twentieth. Twenty twenty two. Not creating any new nonconformities and to the extent that it intensifies any existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and that the board grant a relief requested.
I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I give that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I just wouldn't say this, I've been around for a while and I really appreciate this board. I mean, I, I sat here for five hearings and you guys did a great job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now gotten as many a rose as chair as I got in my four years. I also have the record.
I still have my doorstep, is that right?
That's right. Janine, before we adjourn the meeting, um, do we have any outstanding business? So, uh, no, I think we're off the date on the minutes, to to prove. So in that, I will move that we adjourn the meeting. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, so.